The time is now four thirty-eight P M. Good afternoon and welcome to the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-five Climate Change Action Plan Ad hoc Committee Meeting. I am Pamela Boozer-Struther, Committee Chair and District Three Board Member. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to today's meeting, and I look forward to our work tonight. For those unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be accessed in the PG CPS YouTube channel for later viewing. The agenda and documents can be found on the PG CPS Board Docs linked from the Board of Education homepage. Before we begin, I just wanted to to say a few words that, you know, in this context of a presidential administration that is turning its back on climate action, our work in Maryland and PG CPS continues. The Maryland Energy Administration Grant Program for School System Projects is funded. Electric Bus Depot conversions continue in many school systems so that the granted, purchased, and leased buses get on the road as quickly as possible. The PG CPS Board continues to highlight during our our general meetings, the academic curriculum and extracurricular experiences directly related to students taking climate action in their schools and in their communities. And our very own Climate Change Action Plan that brings us together today and throughout the year is inspiring school systems and communities, and PG CPS leaders are frequently receiving requests to speak at conferences and advocacy events. And just this weekend, I joined Karen Yoho, a Frederick County Board of Education member, on a panel with representatives from the Maryland Energy Administration and City of Baltimore Public Schools to help Frederick County Public Schools continue to organize for action. And so I just wanted to say that our work matters. All of you here on this ad hoc committee matter, our PG CPS staff implementing the work that our commitment is there even in a broader context that is that I know many of us are finding, you know, very difficult and, of course, very concerned for our children and our children's future. Today, we will learn about school-related climate bills in Annapolis. We will hear from our student members about their recent activities and plans for the Student Environmental Alliance Annual Summit. And we will deep dive into priority area number two and three, reducing PG CPS carbon footprint from buildings and committing to renewable energy sources for net zero emissions future. So thank you all for committing to this work. So, Ms. Lopez, please, please call the roll.
Ms. Pamela Boozer-Struther?
Present.
Donald Bell? Kate Colsoni?
Present.
Jessie Gomez? Joseph Jakuda?
Present.
Christina?
Well?
Present.
Timothy Mayer?
Present.
Dorothy Dorothy Morrison? David Noto? Beth Novick?
Present.
Ramon Lencia-Cavell? Benjamin Rousch? Antoine Thompson? James DuBonne Garcia?
Present.
Maya Budera? Olivia Thomas?
Present.
Sofia Villar? Michael Witherspoon?
Present.
Nine members present.
And this is Donald Bell. I am present. I'm driving. I was unable to unmute when you called my name, but I'm here.
Thank you. I will call your name, Donald Bell?
Present.
And this is James Robertson. I did not hear my name called.
Yeah, I apologize. James Robertson?
Present.
So there are ten members present, and is there anybody that I'm missing?
Yes, good evening. I'm Jamie Austin, J A M double E. You can see my name, Austin. Thank you.
All right. If it's okay, do you mind if I I call again, or I'll just call your name, James Robertson?
Yeah, I think we have guests plus our committee members. So I think now that we've reached quorum, I'm comfortable with us moving forward and calling the meeting to order. So that, thank you so much, Ms. Lopez, and we could catch other folks as they come in a little later.
All right.
So if there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting agenda. Hearing no objections, the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting agenda is adopted. Item one point four, approval of the meeting minutes. If there are no corrections, the committee shall approve the December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes as distributed. There being no corrections, the December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four minutes are approved. Did did I just hear someone come on to say something?
I believe it was me sadly.
Okay, welcome. So with that, we're able to move into our primary presentations, two point O. And there are two items for discussion this evening. We and we will limit each member's questions and feedback to two point five minutes per round unless a motion is taken for additional rounds. So it would be two rounds per agenda item. We're going to start with two point one, the legislative update. And the and the chair recognizes Joseph Jakuda for the legislative report. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member. So I'm going to review a handful of bills that were proposed in this legislative session up in Annapolis that impact that have an impact on climate, the nexus of climate in schools, as well as one additional item that I became aware of yesterday that I wanted to bring to your attention. First is H P sixty-one. It, sorry, out of breath there. Um, it would require that all new or majorly renovated schools that have a newer majorly renovated parking lot install the necessary equipment to eventually install solar canopy. So it's kind of a solar canopy-ready parking lot. It was introduced by Delegate Charcutian and had a hearing on January the twenty-eighth. And it's in the Appropriations Committee. There's no Senate companion bill. Next slide. One of the bigger ones is the Renew Act. That's S B one forty-nine, H B one twenty-eight. This bill would set a fee on fossil fuel companies that they would have to pay into the state of Maryland, including coal companies and oil companies, I think, natural gas companies. It touches on schools, though, because some of the funds would go to two specific school-related lock boxes for the electric school bus funds and then for heat pumps for schools. And schools are one of the one of the possible groups that could get the heat pump funds. But there are specifically LEAs were specifically listed. In the Senate, this is in three E, and in the House, this is in Economic Matters. They both had, both of those had hearings. Now, one thing to note, from what I understand, is that in the Senate, the this bill was changed, it was amended to change it from actually implementing this to conducting a study on the benefits of implementing this. So obviously, we don't know how anything will pan out, but at this point, it may not provide the funds as originally intended right off the bat. Next slide. S B eight eighteen and H P sixty-six, School Building Energy Use Monthly Reporting. This would require each LEA to collect energy use data and provide that to the Inter A N C Commission on School Construction. And then the I A C would then be required, well, I guess prior would be required to set regulations of what what data should be collected. And then afterwards, they would take the collected data and come up with recommendations for improving school building energy efficiency. I'm guessing, given all the grants that PG CPS has received on this subject, that we probably would be pretty well set to comply with this. And this is also in the three E Committee in the Senate, and this is in appropriations in the House. And hearings were held in both the Senate and the House at this point. And the sponsors in the Senate are both Prince George's Senators. Next slide. School seat belts. This would require, starting in two thousand and twenty-seven, school buses to become equipped with seat belts for all passengers. And also would require a public safety education program to be set up. This was sponsored by Senator Ellis in the Senate and Taveras in the House. He may recall was on our original Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group. And but the hearings were held in both houses as well. Next slide. Safe Alternative Walks to School. Oh, the both of the last two bills, this is their second time up, as was this one. So they had all been introduced last session and did not make it through. This one, S B five twenty-six and H B eight eleven, Safe Alternative Walks to School. It will require the board to every year post the on the on the website ways for students that have that do not have bus transportation to be able to safely walk to school. And it also has some additional requirements on reporting. This one was sponsored by Ellis in the Senate and Teresa in the House. And the hearings were held for both. You'll notice that hearings were held for both as a common refrain. None of these have moved out of committee yet, unless they did this afternoon, and I did not catch that. But as of yesterday, that nothing has moved out. Next slide. This one's something that one of our members has been working on. Mr. Meyer, I'm sure he'll have extra to say about this, but S B one thousand and three and H B four ninety-three, Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. This would designate November fourteenth as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day to commemorate Ruby Bridges, who on November fourteenth, nineteen sixty, became the first African-American student to integrate into an all-white school in New Orleans. And it also developed some model content, educational content around the day. This one, it it looks like it was introduced later in the Senate and thus is going to the Rules Committee there. But it was introduced into the House, and a hearing was held on February twelfth. And both of the sponsors are Prince George's reps, Senator Benson and Delegate Fennell. Next slide.
Joe, I can, is this a good time for me to jump in with a quick update on this?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I'll I'll recognize you, Tim.
All right, thank you. I was just got a phone call from Delegate Fennell's office before this meeting. It, the bill made it unanimously through the Subcommittee with a favorable recommendation, and then just today made it through the full Ways and Means Committee with a favorable recommendation. And in addition to Delegate Fennell, there were ten other delegates who had put their names on the bill. And apparently, during the committee hearing today, several other delegates raised their hand and asked to be added. So I'll have the final count later, but we seem to be getting some good momentum on this particular bill. And I'm going to be following up with the Rules Committee to see what we can do to get it scheduled for a hearing there.
Wonderful news. Next up, we have S B eight oh eight. This is Stop Sign Monitoring Systems in Prince George's County at school bus stops. This was introduced by Senator Augustine, and the idea here is that there was a bill last year that Delegate Healy introduced that would allow for stop sign cameras in school zones. And this kind of helps to fill in a gap because you can have students waiting for a bus outside of a school zone along a busy highway. So this would kind of fill in those gaps and allow for stop sign cameras outside of school zones if they're along a state highway. And that was, the hearing was on this, was today in judicial proceedings. Next slide. S B seven seven nine and H B fourteen fifty-one, the Climate Solutions Now Act, Affordability Act of two thousand and twenty-five. This is, the sponsors are Galleon and Chilsum. This would place, this would allow for an ability for certain things to be opted out of in climate solutions now, certain requirements. If there was an explanation of economical practicability. And one of the the most interest to PG CPS would be that this would allow school LEAs to opt out of purchasing electric school buses if they claim economic impracticality. And this was held, hearing was in the Senate already. The House hearing is coming up next. Next slide. Okay. S B one thirty-four and H B forty-two. This one was also, I believe, introduced last session, the Waste of Food Reduction and Diversion Fund and Grant Programs. It does a lot, but the big thing for school systems is that it would provide grants to eligible entities, which include LEAs to implement on-farm recycling, compost use, waste food prevention, and food rescue. This was how, the hearings were held in the Senate and the House already, and Senators Hester and Delegate Boyce were the sponsors. Next slide. Okay, I'm going to punt Pamela because I did not quite follow this bill, but I wanted, I knew it was of note for us, H B five forty, the Green School Stewardship Act.
Yeah, I think we're just gonna have to call everyone's attention to it to take a look at it and review it. It's it's my understanding that there's a couple of bills that are helping Mayo, which is an organization that we care very much about and partner with for our green school designations. I believe some, there's there, the Assembly is trying to help the organization of the resources to help more equity in green school designation, that there are schools in disadvantaged areas that are having, that are not moving along as quickly. And I think there's some of that in this bill, but I I am going to have to ask folks to look this one up on their own and and just, you know, let me know if if you have an opinion or, you know, if we were, if the board should weigh in on these. But everyone, of course, is welcome to weigh in on on these bills individually as well. So sorry that I can't offer too much more on this one either.
Next slide. And here is my curveball. This one's not legislation, and I just became familiar with this yesterday, so. But I want to bring it to everyone's attention. The Maryland Public Service Commission has a case, regulatory docket, case number nine four seven eight. And what they're doing is taking comments on the Phase Two E V Pilot Proposals from Pepco, B G and E, and SEMCO. So three of our three major utilities in Maryland. Rent comments are due on the twenty-eighth and the hearings on the ninth of April. And why this is important to us, a lot of it is about making sure folks, especially, you know, the schools and other entities ask to make sure that these plans really do consider medium and heavy-duty charging. You know, the necessary power lines, to get power where it needs to go, any necessary rate structures, all that kind of stuff to make sure E V charging of school buses and other medium and heavy-duty vehicles is met. I took a glance through two of them yesterday, Pepco's and B G and E's. It does seem like B G and E is talking to the need for this type of infrastructure in their plan. And I saw that our neighbors over Montgomery County, their contractor, I guess Highland, had made comments in favor of what they were doing. It did not look like Pepco said anything on this, so I did not look at SEMCO's. I do think they touch the very southern part of our county. So I definitely would hope that folks working in the school system on electric buses can look at these two to see if there's a reason to make comments. And I think this is a good opportunity because I know that after conversations, we've heard from y'all, charging infrastructure is a real bug, a bugbear when it comes to this implementation.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much for that. I see that Ms. Austin has raised her hand, so she may be to offer a little more on this and our opportunity to comment.
Yes, would you like for me to hold that till later, Board Member Boozer-Struther, or?
I think you should go now if it's, you know, directly related to this report.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Jakuda. You are correct. I am, we are aware of B G E's activity with the Public Service Commission. They actually had something posted back in January. And we have been actively reaching out to Pepco as our next bus lots will will be in a Pepco-powered area. And with regards to SEMCO, this is really great because we are in need of some E V charging stations at the William Schmidt Project. So thank you so much for sharing this.
No problem. And I think that also brings me to the end of the slides.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Jakuda. That was very informative. And and just a little context for the board, that we have a Policy and Governance Committee that meets, and we will be meeting again on Tuesday. And I have, we we've, I have brought forward a couple of these bills that are, you know, very clear about, you know, that it's to our advantage to support and send in a letter, but we do have to analyze all of them to be clear on our position. And then because both our board, as well as statewide board, I'm sorry, I think I just froze. I'm gonna start over. Our board, as well as MAVE, our statewide board, have in our resolutions to support climate action-related bills that would include, say, something like the composting bill. We can move forward as a committee with that letter without going to a full board vote, so it saves us time. So are there any questions of of Mr. Jakuda? All right. I don't see any now, but of course, always feel free to follow up outside of the the meeting. We can move on to our next agenda item, two point two, the Director of Sustainability Report. So I will recognize now Director Morrison for her report. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer-Struthers, and good evening, everyone. For today's sustainability report, it's not a whole lot, but first, oh, Ms. Adrianne, do you have the presentation? It's Ms. Adrianne. I thought I saw her. Is she still there? No, you are. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm gonna, if you don't mind, give me five minutes, I can send it to Rosa, because the really, my computer is doing something crazy. Yeah, it's fine. I will go ahead and I'm just, during this time, just take the opportunity to introduce a nearest member of the Department of Sustainability and Resiliency Team. Her name is Christina Garcia Starling, who joined us on February the tenth. And with that, I'll just have her just say a quick intro, introduce herself to the to the group.
Hi, thank you, Dorothy. It's a pleasure to meet you all and and to be here. Good evening again. My name is Christina Garcia Starling. My background has been in international engineering, sustainability, and program management. And I'm very excited to be part of the D S D S R team to implement the great work that you have done in putting the C cap together to increase our sustainability impact across and throughout the PG C P, PG CPS community and beyond. Thank you all. It's a pleasure.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia Starling. Okay, so I will just continue without the presentation. I don't know if I can access it from here. Let me just check real quick while Cindy's also doing.
I have access to it. No problem. I believe I got it. Yes.
Okay, wonderful. There you go. Okay. So keep going. This is just a cover slide, I guess. Go ahead. Next slide, next slide, please. Okay, keep going. Okay, so of course, y'all are fully familiar with this. The A Party items, again, this is just a cover slide, just to, so I don't think we have any new members, but just in the event that we did, I just put this on here. And basically, the Director of Sustainability Report looks at not, obviously, all these areas. For the most part, just highlighting new things and updates that have happened from the prior meeting to date. So it's really just a broad brush overview with a focus on a specific area. And tonight's focus area of discussion will be on, I guess, the priority area two and three, which focus on energy management. So the building carbonization footprint reduction, as well as renewable energy source commitment. So next slide, please. We already have done the welcome. So with regards to C cap implementation, I think Board Member Boozer-Struther has obviously alluded to this, that given the current atmosphere at the federal level, we have to think about some things and how the lack of funding or total elimination of some funds might impact how we implement the C cap, specifically how we deliver certain projects that relate to the C cap. So I just wanted to let everyone know that we are, I guess, at this administration level, are working really diligently to to try to assess what we need to do, given the the current atmosphere. So, for example, we may have to reprioritize things that we were hoping to get federal funding for. We might have to kind of just not totally eliminate it, but just kind of move it down the road a little bit. So, for example, in the area of electric school buses, so, you know, obviously, everybody knows that there's been a pause. So what we have been talking about in-house with Chief Howe is, given the budget shortage, is that we are trying to minimize risk, and we're going, we will be going for grants that are sort of guaranteed, for lack of a better term. So not so much the federal grants, but the state grants. And of course, M E A, Maryland Energy Administration, has been really generous in terms of granting us grants for the electric school buses. So while we look at potential shortages on the on the grant side for the federal funding, we're hopeful that there might be opportunities, for example, in the healthy food space because it's it's our understanding that this administration, one of the priority areas, obviously, is healthy food. So we're hoping, no guarantees that, you know, funds may arise from the enriched case. We will obviously focus our attention to make sure we take care of those, take advantage of those opportunities. funds may arise from the enriched case. We will obviously focus our attention to make sure we take care of those, take advantage of those opportunities. So we are continually talking to not only folks at the state level, but we have consultants who are looking at philanthropic funding as well. So that's an area we're considering. Just, I think it was earlier this week, we had a meeting internally with the Governor's Office and they were talking to us about potential opportunities in terms of decarbonization. So that was an initial conversation. We hope to stay in touch with them and just make sure that we continue to advocate for potential funding that might be available. So on that note, I just wanted to just give a quick update on some of the grants that we have either just applied for or that we, or we plan to apply for in the near future. So the first one being obviously the M E A decarbonizing school grant in the area of interest one, which focuses on building school capacity. And we are hoping to, as you all may or may not know, we did receive a grant back in twenty twenty-two. I, this is before my time, but I believe it was for F Y twenty twenty-two. And so what we are hoping to do is if we get these funds, we will obviously continue to do the work in terms of data collection, energy data collection for portfolio manager. And of course, I think that Sheila and Jimmy may also mention that in their presentation tonight. But, and also we have included in the F Y twenty twenty-six, some budget funds to be able to cover some consultant's work. So we can continue to do data collection and we'll have the dashboards that can be used for schools as well in terms of curriculum and education. And then the other grant which we are applying for is the M E A Electric School Bus Program. There's about seventeen million dollars in that program, and I think it's up to about three million per L E A. So we are definitely applying for that. I believe that is due end of this month, if I'm not mistaken. And the third area of opportunity is in the solar, so M E A area of area of interest number two, I guess it's, it's, it's solar support. And that would help with planning installation of solar energy systems on school rooftops, parking lots, ground mounted solar. So we are definitely planning to apply for that as well. That's also due at the end of this month. So we're, we're very, very busy between now and the end of the month to, to get those, those grants out the door. Okay, so next slide. And this is just a quick update. We are continuing to work on the Electric School Bus Microgrid Project, Pilot Project that we have going on at the Mulligan Bus Lot, Bowie. We have weekly calls on that. And so that's coming along nicely. And with regards to climate resilient land management, we were approached with the County Department of Environment and University of Maryland Finance Center to work with us on developing resiliency hubs, which, you know, we're looking at the new schools are as opposed to be designed to be resiliency hubs. So partnering with the Department of Environment at the county level as well as University of Maryland, we will develop projects that pertain to resiliency hubs. And initial conversations have talked about things like maybe even having community gardens in those spaces. So I think that that would be excellent if we can get some, some projects going. In terms of outreach and engagement, Prince George's County was well represented at last month's Mayo Conference. And I believe we, we spoke on things like the drivers for Prince George's County Climate Action, which of course includes our C cap and that we're also fond and proud of. So we got a lot of accolades for that. There was presentations on energy as well as what we're doing with recycling and composting. So like I said, Prince George's County was well represented at that conference. We, we were allotted about three or four slots to present on the work that we're doing. And I will let, I guess, maybe later on, if time permits, because I know Donald and James on the, on the, on the call. As you know, our annual Student Environmental Alliance Summit is going to be happening April ninth at Bladensburg Park as well as a second day event on April the twenty-fourth at Bowie State. And what we're planning to also do concurrently is to have what we're calling the Adult Climate Leadership Workshop. So we have the events for the students, but then we're also going to have a concurrent session, sort of like a breakout session. It's going to be half a day, not, not, we have not finalized the time yet, but it's an opportunity for all the folks that are part of the C cap implementation, both internally and externally to meet as well as invite some other L E As to join us and for us to just talk about, you know, what our challenges are, what the opportunities are and how we can work together. So more to come on that. We're in the process of developing the flyers and then we'll be sending out the save the date shortly. And lastly, like I mentioned before, we will be doing a deeper dive into the priority area two and three, which focuses on energy management. So I will, should, Board Member Boozer Struthers, should I just button them in now or did you, do I have the pause for questions? Actually, probably pause for questions, right?
Yeah, we, we can now take questions. Thank you so much, Director Morrison. This is a great report. Really appreciate it. Are there any questions right now for Director Morrison? I see, I see Joseph Jakuta's hand up and Christina Quox. So Joseph and then followed by Christina.
First, I'd like to say that's all really good news and I'm glad you guys are looking at state and private philanthropies for funds, given, you know, the challenge for, challenges we're hearing about what's going on at the federal level. I wanted to inquire if there is any need or any, any need for shows of community support with any of these grant applications, you know, it's like letters of support or anything like that. Or if it's, you know, and if not, if it's just something that, you know, that, that's not helpful. It's good to note too. But yeah, if you need anything as far as letters of support or anything, I think we would be interested in hearing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jakuta. And of course, the answer is yes. We would never say no to support. So, you know, as we continue to have these conversations and maybe potentially meet with the Governor's Office, I mean, that might be, if we can show a strong, if we have a strong showing of community support, that would also help make our case stronger. So definitely. We will let you know as the, as the need arises.
Yes, please do. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph.
Hi, yes. Thank you so much again for the great report out. It's so hopeful to hear that there are still going to be lots of funding opportunities at the state level despite the pullback on the federal level. So I'm just really glad to hear about all the opportunities that are ahead of us. I was curious if you could maybe speak a little bit about the dashboard that you mentioned. And in particular, I'm interested in what you said around the connections to curriculum. Would love to just hear a little bit more of that. Thanks.
Sure. So, and I, I, like I said, but we'll probably get into that until more detail when we get to number two with, with Jamie. But basically the, the dashboard, we, hopefully when we have all the data, we're going to have the baseline data. And then the dashboard is supposed to report energy use, right? So, and this is a way to show the students, okay, it's a rainy day today or it's a very cold day today. So we're using more energy. So I have not personally witnessed the dashboard. And again, like I said, you know, Jamie and others will go into in depth in that. But, but that's the thinking is that for students to be able to see how the temperature fluctuates, I guess, or energy use, or energy data fluctuations with say, temperature changes, for example, would be, would be one way to, to look at that. So right now, unfortunately, I know we had a dashboard, but we don't have, I think there was some issues with it. We don't have one currently, but we will fix that as, as soon as we get the, the contracts renewed, which have expired right now. That would be a plus, but you'll hear more about it in the presentation to come.
And to add to what Director Morrison shared with the dashboards that we had, real time energy management is, it can be benefited by having dashboards. And we had two robust dashboards. Our best was at New Fairmont Heights High School. And New Fairmont Heights was built lead platinum, no, excuse me, lead gold, I believe it was, or lead silver. And we were able to look at all the components, the impervious pavement, pavement, rainwater harvesting. We also were able to look at the natural gas that was used throughout the day. In other words, you don't have to wait until the bill comes forth, but you can see changes daily. And when you see an anomaly, you can say, hey, we got a Houston, we got a problem here and we can attack it. And then also at that school, Jane Robinson, as well as Donald Bill and members of the Schmidt team, we actually spent time with the architects, Grandma Parker. And we were able to incorporate that with their help. We were, we were able to customize that dashboard for New Fairmont Heights High School. And they produced a lot of that data in the classroom with some of the science teachers. Thank you. I'm, time's up.
Thanks so much. Thank you for that. Thank you for that, Jamie. Thank you so much. And if I, Board Member Boozer Struthers, if there's, oh, somebody's hand is up. Okay, go ahead. I was gonna add one more thing to the report, but go ahead.
Or why don't we have Mr. Meyer go and then you could go ahead and conclude at that, that point.
Yeah, and I, I had to step out for about two minutes. So I apologize if you had already answered this question, but out of the different federal buckets of money or programs that either you were accounting on getting money from or planning to apply from, are there, are there one or two areas that are, for, for lack of a better phrase, the most at risk right now? And that could also, I'm asking the question partially because if there's some areas that just don't exist at all, let alone cut, just don't exist at all at the federal level right now, that's where we can really target some of our asks at the state level and other, and, and through.
Well, definitely, you know, I, I think our hardest hit area is in the electric school buses, because as you know, that is, it's very expensive to acquire those buses. And so, you know, we were hoping to get federal grants, not only just to get the buses, but to also have the charging infrastructure that goes with that. So that's, that's a huge hit for us.
So, so trans, the transportation related?
Yeah, the transportation, definitely.
And as a follow-up, are you seeing, was there any federal money of color that you were counting on?
But I'm sorry, say that.
Any federal money for solar projects that you, that you would have been counting?
Not necessarily. Cause a lot, so what we've been thinking about doing with regards to solar is to put out sort of like a master R F P for solar, right? And we're almost like looking at a P three model of sorts where we'll have somebody come in, build, sort of design, build, install, and also be responsible for O N M. And then we will pay something to that. So that necessarily may not need federal grants per se. So yeah, I think that, you know, I think that solar was not necessarily going to be, I mean, obviously if we, if we saw the opportunity for funding, we would apply for it, but that wasn't one of the ones. But however, we did apply for, and it was a large chunk, I believe it's ten or twenty million dollars for environmental justice, community changement. And I don't think we're going to get that. I mean, it will be, I don't know, but I, I just really doubt that. And so with that project, we were looking at, again, partnering with, with the university system, the County Department of Environment to have students from our C T E program participate. And we were looking at, I'm sorry. Sorry, my time is up. Can I finish? Can I just finish my thoughts or can I finish my thought? Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah. So, so yeah, definitely. That would have been an awesome program where, you know, the students would have been able to participate and you know, going to feels like botany, you know, just zoology, but we don't know what's happening with that. We're not hopeful that it's going to happen. However, the Department of Environment with the county is still committed to working with us to do something, maybe not in such a grand scale, but we will be doing something. So that's the good part.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, thank you so much. Does that conclude your report?
It does, but I just wanted to also just say that, you know, thanks to yourself, Board Member Boozer Struthers, and I guess Ms. Chloe, we had a, a meet and greet with our new director, which some of you may or may not have met. Her name is Ms. Mary Kirkland. And she's very, you know, it was a really exciting meeting. Everybody was, was excited. There was a lot of energy in the room. She is, she definitely has wonderful ideas with regards to having students participate in things like food testing so that we can increase the number of meals, which we all know translates to obviously less food waste reduction, which is part of our, one of our C cap goals here. So we're excited to have her on board. And she and I and everybody looks forward to working with the, we call them food stakeholders to see how we can make a difference on, I believe it's priority area six. So that's all I wanted to add.
Yeah, thank you so much. And, and I did also hear from our volunteer parents and advocacy team that did get to meet with Ms. Kirkland, new director of Food Services, Food and Nutrition Services, that they, that it went so well that they're all committed to regular meetings. So that is a highlight as well, making more progress in that area. So thank you. All right. So thank you so much. And now I'm excited for us to move to agenda item two point three, our student engagement updates. And we will hear from Ms. Novick, who is our student member mentors and educator on our committee along with, let's see, we have James with us today and Michael and Olivia. And I don't think I've, I've seen Maya come in and has, I don't think I see Sophia either. So we are excited to hear from all of you. And then also included to talk about Student Environmental Alliance Planning, the summit, Mr. Roberson and Mr. Bell, as, as you would like to join in and add to that, that discussion as well. So, but I'll, I'll have, I'll have Ms. Novick kick us off.
Hello, everyone. I, I gotta say, I don't think I've ever worked with such a productive group of people in my life as these youngsters. And we got a lot accomplished. So I'm going to run through a little bit of a list. It might take me a minute. Do I have a time?
Oh, no, you're, you, you could have five, five, 10 minutes, you know, whatever's needed. We want to hear from everyone.
Okay. And then I'll have, the kids can speak afterwards. Each one of them will have their own version of perspective on what happened. Maya is very sick and asked me to share that she sends her regards and apologizes for not being here, but needed to rest. So at one point during our work together, I listened to a podcast on Hidden Brain and it was called When It's All Too Much. And it was about a professor, I think it's Stanford, who was working with students and she noticed an extreme level of depression amongst her students. She's a climate, she was teaching on the topic of climate change. And she really went through like kind of this personal understanding that it was a lot for young people to handle. And so she worked with her students and what they came up with was that what we want to induce in our students is not despair. Rather, it is a feeling of being a collective. Stop being just I, plug into the collective. The planet needs us to come together and enjoy life on this planet. So the joy amongst these youth is pretty amazing. They're quite resilient and boy, they get a lot done. The first thing we did, I got a little bit of a timeline here, was it's only been one year since they've been on this committee. It was last April that they first joined. And the, then right after that, they were at the Student Environmental Summit last year on, one day on, at Bladensburg, and then one day at the conference. And that was the first time that they worked together was at that Student Environmental Conference, the four of them, including Olivia and James. Then Donald, I think, reached out to them and said, they're going to film in Prince George's County on the topic of wild bird strikes. And they want to put stencils on windows to, to alert birds to the fact that this is a window, don't bang into it. So we coordinated with Red Rock Films and PBS and Michael and James will be in that video, which will be on, it's called Wild Hope through PBS. And that probably will come out in March or April. And then they did a teacher focused training with, about climate change action with a group that I guess Prince George's County coordinates with called Eco America. And the student, Michael and James in particular, created a film about what, what was the biggest influence in their lives that made that difference? That made them want to be change makers. And so they creates, created their own presentation and it really made a hit with the teachers. So then Eco America said, well, look here, since you're, we can trust you and you're, you're great and you come through. And so they said, now make videos for other students. And Red Rock Films recorded that and produced, or not Red, Eco America produced that. After that, Eco America said, look, we give out a big award every year and we would like for you to apply for that award. So I wrote that nomination and they were selected out of several hundred applicants to be in the top twenty-five. And so then they had to put together some And so then they had to put together some things that proved very difficult. First of all, they didn't feel quite ready to produce a, they had to produce a film. One minute to produce a film, they weren't quite sure what their message would be yet. They thought, well, we'll know next year. And secondly, they're in four different schools and they just could not find a common meeting ground. And I would say, if there's one thing that I would give advice about my role and their roles and this committee, is that they need in-person time, um, to get together and get some things worked out and done. They do a really good job on Zoom, but they need to get together to problem solve, to work through some things, to actually, these kids are really tangible and they wanna get together and do things. So I, I think there should really be some thought about how to make that happen. They're very busy, but I think that would be helpful. Um, then they met with maybe you Pamela and, um, the county communications person and talked about how would they become communicators with their peers about the things they're doing with C cap. Um, I'm going to read for you the nomination, uh, that I wrote. It'll only take me a minute and then I'm gonna turn it over to them. They needed a title, so I called them the Youth Climate Leaders of Prince George's County. Four middle and high school students, Olivia Thomas, Michael Witherspoon, James Dubon Garcia and Maya Gudera, serve as active members of the Prince George's County Climate Change Action Plan Ad hoc Committee. At monthly meetings with PG CPS leadership, these students help review action items, share progress, and ensure the county meets its climate goals. Their work bridges institutional priorities with grassroots activism, creating a powerful model for environmental education and policy advancement. So that's the part I would really like to help them expand on presenting how they are doing that. These students are committed to raising awareness about the Climate Change Action Plan among students and teachers, inspiring youth to participate in climate solutions and promoting equity in climate education and community engagement. They accomplish this through presentations at events like Prince George's County Green Summit, where they showcase PG CPS environmental projects and C cap priority, priorities. They also contributed to the Climate Ambassador Training, educating teachers and students about the plan and its importance. Additionally, they have built a strong youth network through the Student Environmental Coalition and the Prince George's County Regional Association of Student Governments, fostering environmental leadership across the district. By engaging their peers and encouraging educators to integrate climate solutions into daily learning, they've expanded the reach and impact of C cap initiatives. These four students exemplify leadership and innovation in climate action, inspiring a new generation of environmental leaders while advancing just and equitable solutions in their community. Their efforts not only drive systemic change, but also ensure that climate action remains inclusive and impactful for all. So turn it over to the students now, because they do things that I don't know about.
All right, who'd like to jump in first?
I can start. Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Witherspoon and, um, I am here. Hello, um. So something that I would like to talk about, um, is the Student Environmental Coalition. Um, so we've been doing a lot of planning with the CEES Conference. Um, some people on this call have been part of that process and we're super excited for all the exciting things that we have coming. Um, we also have an upcoming event. We're doing an environmental career panel. And we've also been working on getting our social media out. So we've been doing posts on social media and trying to have more engagement and, you know, visibility within the county. Also, yeah, the Student Environment Coalition has been working on that. And there's one more thing.
Yeah, I'm. Is the communication?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. That, say so much. So we did have a communications meeting with, um, Board Member Boozer Strutter and Communication Leaders or the Communication People in PG County. Um, so we did actually come up with a plan and we are working towards, like, we have steps laid out by month. Um, we are a bit behind our timetable, but we are taking steps towards getting our first videos out. We're trying to do a video for each priority recommendation so students can really, um, students across the county can really see, you know, this is who we are. These are our priority recommendations and this is the impact we made and how we're actually impacting, like, what we're actually doing. So, um, we're super excited for that and we're, we've been working on that too. So, yeah, that's my part.
Um, and I guess I'll jump in here. So hello all, my name is James Duong Garcia. I'm a ninth grader. Uh, yeah, and, uh, I just had a little, uh, possible proposal that I, I would like to get the opinion from the C cap committee on, um, about priority recommendation number five, which is regarding food waste. Um, after discussing with like, uh, a bunch of people like Ms. Novick, my peers, and, um, just getting the opinion from other students, um, there's a lot of food waste happening during lunches. Like, I don't know if you've seen, but there, there's like bins and bins of bins full of trays and food waste that's just getting thrown away. And, um, that really struck me as an issue. So I, I was like, hey, can we do something about that? So, um, I had an idea where I think we should provide better school lunches, because like the opinion of the students is that school lunches aren't really the best right now. And I think that's one of the reasons why a lot of it is getting thrown away. So, um, I was thinking that we could do a series of focus groups in collaboration with, um, uh, this wonderful person I met, Ms. Tiffany Horsley, which is a part of the Strategic Planning and Resource Management. Um, we could conduct a series of focus groups to gain the opinion of students on how they feel about the school lunches being provided. And then at the time, um, I, I, I think that there wasn't a Director of Sustainability that, like, that role wasn't being filled. And I think it was, um, Ms. Morrison that just said that, um, they recently just got somebody to fill the role. So I was thinking then we could take that information and then provide it to the person that is, you know, conducting all the food production, uh, yeah. So I just wanted to get the opinions of you all and what you think on that. Yes, Ms. Morrison?
Okay. I just wanted to say, well, first of all, thank you for that. And, you know, we literally had a leadership meeting, an operations leadership meeting this morning. And guess what was the topic of discussion? So, um, Ms. Kirkland, this was her first meeting, so it was an opportunity for her to talk about her goals. And, um, the, the lady from the strategic, I guess you call it strategic management group, um, mentioned this idea about meeting with students and, um, having a survey on a different, we even talked about having like, you know, food tasting and we're gonna capture all that on camera and there's gonna be photos, because you wanna obviously hi- highlight that. And we definitely wanna get the students' input on a menu, because you're perfectly right. If the food tastes good and it's appealing, students will eat it. And if they consume the food, we're not gonna have so much waste. So I just wanna say that it's in the works, more to come. And I will report back to Ms. Kirkland to let her know to maybe potentially, you know, connect with you and just kinda maybe to share ideas one-on-one. But that is actually in the works and we're planning to do exactly what you just suggested.
Um, thank you so much, Ms. Morrison, for the update. Um, yeah. Uh, I would be very glad if I could connect with Ms. Kirkland on this project.
We'll make it happen.
Thank you so much. And then, um, another thing I wanted to talk about was, um, I think this idea was originally brought up by Ms. Novick. As well as school lunches generally not being that, that, the best. Ms. Novick has stated that there's like a bunch of plastic bags and plastic cups are just being thrown away in the trash. Somewhere around the thousands that's just being thrown away. And although that's not really priority recommendation number five, it's still an issue of like, there's just this bunch of plastic that's being produced and then thrown away. So that's definitely an issue I think we could tackle as students.
I just wanted to really quickly jump in and say, um, I'll kinda add on to what James was saying. Because I see that at school, like, even though, um, plastic bags have been banned from a lot of stores at school, they're still using it for like breakfast and lunch and like every day. So many are getting just used every day.
What they're talking about is that breakfast is served in a plastic bag. So at our school, say I do breakfast duty, let's say there's six hundred children eating breakfast. Their breakfast comes to them in a plastic bag. And so if there's six hundred at Chemore and I don't know how many schools there are in the county, multiply six hundred a day times that many in the county. To be perfectly honest, that's how kids at Chemore got the straws in Prince George's County banned. They drew attention to the fact that we used to serve little red plastic straws with the spoon. And it came in a little pa- packet. And the kids counted in one day how many plastic straws that was, multiplied it by the number of students, students in the county, and then multiplied that by the number of days in a year and came up with millions of plastic straws that were being produced by Prince George's County. I venture to say it's millions of plastic bags being produced by Prince George's County a day. But that's Olivia's team. She has a little team at school working on that. And I mentioned to the students, I go to North Bay Adventure Center with, um, sixth graders every year. And I noticed at North Bay, I said to the team at North Bay, why did your, why are your lunches so trash now? They used to serve like homestyle. And they said that af- at COVID, changed public policy on how food was distributed. It has to be an individual servings. And so I was wondering how much of that, um, impacted the decisions of, uh, food services on how things are ha- managed in the cafeteria.
Yeah, a- absolutely. And I've taken notes on everything reported so far, so we could start formulating actions. But I do see Mr. Roberson wants to add, jump into this conversation as well.
So this does not solve the problem, but we are aware of the plastic bags and the amount of waste that's produced. Um, there are organizations that want those plastic bags like Trex. Uh, you can return your, your bags to the grocery store, Home Depot, or, uh, you know, a store like that. Now, the, the onus is on the school slash a teacher to, you know, make sure that collection happens, transport those bags, drop them off. It's, it's a, it can be a bit of a ordeal or a thing. Um, there is not any system-wide apparatus to, to collect those bags, sort them and, and return them anywhere. Um, but we have seen some schools do this. I just wanted to put that out. But it doesn't solve the problem, uh, at the point of, um, of serving breakfast.
Yeah, thank you for adding that context. I see Mr. Meyer wanted to, um, respond to the student presentation as well. And it looks like, uh, Ms. Alston as well.
I'm sorry, I was, I was on mute. Uh, James beat me to my point. I was raising my hand to, to say that several years ago, Mount Rainier Elementary had done, had done gathering of plastic bags and materials for Trex recycling. And we never quite quantified exactly how much, because I just lost count of the bags over the years. But we would just get a big trash bag or two that was filled up in the library and the school would call us whenever, whenever it was starting to reach capacity to have a parent haul it away. So I, as a kind of a follow-up on what James said, I'm wondering if there is anything that we can do to, to actively encourage more schools to do this. Um, I don't know if we can require them, but that's why I use the phrase actively encourage, um, just to get the word out to principals that, that this, until we solve the issue of handing out breakfast in plastic bags, we can at least try to do a better job of recycling the waste. Uh, and there's also, uh, with Trex program, you could also just use shrink wrap, uh, that with a lot of books come in and lots of other, uh, things in the schools that ultimately end up in the trash right now. And then my, and then my second part was, while we're talking about food waste, do we know what the count is right now for how many schools have some sort of compost program?
Yeah, um, currently we have thirty-five and we are hoping to up that number to forty-five during the next academic school year.
Okay, thank you. Just, I, I, I know it's one of those programs that we have to ramp up bit, bit by bit, but that's good to know that we can make progress.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Ms. Alston?
Thank you. Uh, students, I just wanted to commend you. Great job. Um, really, um, passionate about all that you're doing at your respective schools. And I wanted to ask, what schools do you represent, please? Ms. Thomas?
Well, I represent Parkdale High School.
Parkdale, okay. Great. You're gonna get new lighting there. Okay. Oh, you're getting a new lighting. And Mr. Uh, Witherspoon?
I am a junior at the Academy of Health Sciences at Prince George's Community.
All right, great. And Ms. Thomas?
Um, Kenmore Middle School.
Okay, excellent. And so my follow-up question for Ms. Novick is, Ms., I'm not sure of your role. Are you a green schools teacher there? Please, I apologize if I missed that.
No, that's right. I'm the tag coordinator at Chemore Middle School, but I also manage our Environmental Topics Club.
Excellent. To your point in what you mentioned about what the students are involved with, have you heard about the Energizing Student Potential Program?
No.
That's a program that we've been participating in since about twenty seventeen. And teachers can volunteer to participate annually and they actually bring the curriculum back to the classroom. We've had about thirty-five or plus or more schools to participate each year since about twenty seventeen. And this gives students the opportunity to present at STEM fairs and, and go on even beyond Prince George's County for other type of initiatives where they can, you mentioned, you know, having in-person opportunities to interact with others. And we've had many students to perform well, even at the, uh, University of Maryland and Drexel University and Illinois Institute of Technology. So that may be something that you may wish to maybe put on the list for next year. Next school year, we have it for elementary schools, middle schools, and we have a few high schools participating also.
Thank you.
Also, there's a summer youth employment program. I know my time is kinda running out, but that, uh, kinda wrapped its arms around energy. If you had any students that were, were parti- interested in participating, I believe we may be doing that again this year. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. I have just one comment, um, in general. As a, as an organization that is taking on environmental, I would encourage at each step to say, is what we're doing gonna require some other intervention? So if we use bags, then we have to have this other intervention where we collect them and send them out for somebody to do something with them. If we don't use bags, we don't have to do that.
I was gonna add, I was gonna add too, that may be something that will come up. I forgot to say that. For our, uh, purchasing department, we have a sustainability A P. And maybe finding out what vendor that is that's delivering the lunches, I mean, the breakfasts in, in plastic bags to find out what alternative means do they have? Because in Prince George's County, there is a plastic bag, um, policy. So, uh, we can maybe work with our purchasing department and find out what vendor that is. And in, in, uh, cooperat- excuse me, in collaboration also with Director Kirkland.
And I just say that, I'm gonna be very honest with this committee. I used to have kids do a lot of recycling. And after COVID, it was really evident that they were messing with things that were unhealthy. They're doing trash. They're doing trash pickup when they're doing recycling. And so that's a lot for twelve, thirteen and fourteen year olds to have to manage. And so. If we could use materials that didn't require recycling, that didn't require cleanup. We don't want our children, even though it's kind of teaching them a strategy, it's hard, hard work. To put together a recycling program in a middle school of thirteen hundred kids.
Ms. Novak, we lost your.
Yeah, and so I think it would be better, this is just my final opinion, to start way up here on these sustainable things and don't even bring them in. Things that are not sustainable. Have that start at the top and make your choices. From probably smaller organizations that are producing more biodegradable products.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much. So many points well taken and many notes and I do appreciate having some focus that Parkdale. Sounds like James Parkdale. Students are raising your hands to say we're ready for the next level of this work. And also, this is great feedback to take back to um priority area number six on. The reduction of materials before they even get to PG CPS. And the, and we have a great project. We have, now we have a director of food and nutrition services in place and we can start to get to work. So. Students, I also just want to applaud you on all of your hard work. I also know you're doing more than what you reported on. I know you got the. Eco Moco chapter going and the work there. And so uh I know you're all doing so much, so thank you. I didn't, I just want one more minute for whoever would like to jump in to talk about. The uh Environmental Alliance Summit because it's such a big and important event. Just to remind everyone. The date, the, I know we got a little bit from Director Morrison, but any, a little more context so everyone could get excited about this because. We'll all get to be invited to observe and, and enjoy the day with our, with the, the students in fact.
I think each one of you should just say what you plan to be doing on that day at the, at the twenty-ninth, maybe at the conference. The, the earlier one is more of an experience, I think. Maybe Donald or James can speak to that differently. But at the conference, what's your plan, young people?
Let me jump in and just give the one minute overview and then I'll, I'll turn it over. Um, so. As you heard, it is a two-day event. April ninth is at Bladensburg Waterfront Park. As best shared, it's more kind of hands-on, it's outdoors, uh, action-oriented. Uh, so we're still, the Schmidt Center and DSR are collaborating to make sure we get. Uh, you know, enough exhibitors out there and workshops for the students. So that's still undergoing planning. And then day two, April twenty-fourth at Bowie State University, more conference style for the students, more workshop oriented. Again, still uh working out which presenters. I'll share some of uh who's already confirmed US Fish and Wildlife. Uh, Maryland Department of Natural Resources, Virginia Tech's gonna be there, Clean Air Partners, Anacostia Watershed Society, EarthDay.org. Uh, Maryland Department of Environment, Prince George's County, uh, some internal folks like our Arts Department. Chesapeake Bay Trust, there's some more. Uh, and so we're continuing to have those exhibitors and workshop presenters. Uh, sign up now, but it should, both days should be exciting. Uh, I'm gonna flip best question and just uh put it out there to this group. Uh, not just the students, but the adults, you know, uh, what are you gonna do there? And because we've got lots of open spots. For uh, for exhibitors and uh workshop presenters. So that's kind of the big picture right now.
Hey, that's great to know. If there's a message that we could email to our whole group to think on that and how they could participate, please, please let me know.
Uh, I will send you the email that we're sending our partners and um. Yeah, I, you know, we're, I, every, if you've got, you know, if you work for an environmental or even a non-environmental um. Have that type of work, um, we want your organization to come in if they're prepared to engage with students.
Great. And then so one quick round from the students on. Anything else you want to offer about your preparation for the summit? And uh then we'll move into priority number uh two and three presentation.
So um at the Student Environmental Coalition meetings, we've been having discussions, especially with um Ms. Levin. Um, about like the students' roles. Um, we've been discussing having um. Whether we're gonna do student videos, how much we're gonna MC and how much we're going to present. And we've also, you know, discussed keynote speakers as, or we, we, we were, we were informed of the keynote speakers and um. Yeah, we, we were, yeah. So my role personally is probably gonna be, you know, helping to MC and. Help things go smoothly.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, James or Olivia, did you want to jump in at this point? Or are you ready for us to move to our next agenda item? I'm watching for your mics to go off. Okay, there goes James. Thanks.
Um, I just wanted to note, uh, so at the last C's conference that I attended. Uh, the C cap students and as well as Ms. Novick, we organized this like little table. Where we spread awareness about the C cap committee. And I was just possibly bringing up the idea of having something like that again, just having a little table. To increase awareness, or we could present something else if we wanted to.
Sounds, sounds great. And I know it's what I would also, you know, be excited to help. Uh, bring awareness to this committee too. So you could count on me to be part of that. Thank you. All right, so not seeing any other hands or mics going off, I am gonna move us to agenda item two point four. This is our uh deep dive uh into our clean and renewable energy sources for net zero future. Priority two, um, and reduce carbon footprint from PG CPS buildings and priority three. Commit to renewable energy sources for net zero emissions future. So I'm going to pass this. Uh, to Director Morrison who will introduce the speakers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Member, who's a Struthers. So our presenters for tonight are um Ms. Sheila Stevens and Ms. Jamie Austin.
Hello, good evening. Do I need to share my screen or um Ms. Aldine, can you or? Capable if you can.
I would say if you could share, go ahead because overhead, the internet is crazy. I don't know why.
Can you see? My screen at all?
We can see. Presentation was up for a second.
Okay. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So yes, uh, good evening. Um, definitely hard to follow such great um. Innovative ideas from our youth, but and again, I apologize, we're combining two priorities, so I'm gonna try to speak quickly, but not too fast. So, but anyway, good evening, Sheila Stevens. I'm one of the program managers with the Department of Sustainability and Resiliency, here to just give you. A broad overview on priority two and three uh status updates, so to speak. Uh, Director Morrison really dove into our funding challenges that were experienced. I may, for um essence of time, I might skip through them, but. Well, we'll, we'll do our best to include everything. So I wanted to start off with the goals. Everyone on this in the audience is very familiar. I wasn't sure if we'd have any members who weren't. But to kind of go over what the goals and um how we're getting there. So. Our C cap obviously is founded off of the idea and the vision of PG CPS wanting to be net zero. School system by twenty forty with all of these, you know, these five items will make up that and that's how we achieve and obtain. That lofty goal, right? But how do we get there? So the C cap being as me- amazing as it is, is our driving force. It's the vehicle that we're using to. Implement these great ideas and strategies to reduce our greenhouse gas reductions. So of the C cap, we know it's made up of fifty-eight operational mitigation and resiliency items, but since everyone's familiar, I won't kind of go into what the difference is. Between those three, but for priority two, which is the, you know, reduced carbon footprint from our PG CPS buildings. It has four operational recommendations, five mitigations and one resiliency. Adaptation action where priority three is our commitment to renewable energy sources for a net zero future. That has two operational recommendations, items, two mitigations and one resiliency. So currently, where are we now with priority two and priority three? Um, in the left-hand column, I have all of the operational recommendation items and on the left-hand column is just kind of like an overview status update. Um, things that you may be aware of, things you may not, but focusing on the private partners to participate in honor of all of our rebates or other. Um, alternative or appropriate financial programs. Um, I didn't know if anyone would be aware of this, but currently language is included in our master specification division twenty-three, which is our HVAC and mechanical systems. And division twenty-six, which is our electrical division, um, division. So. All capital projects has this app, uh, this language in their project manual or their bid specification, so to speak. So when it goes out to bid. Contractor looks at it, they, they will see right off the bat from division twenty-three and division twenty-six, it calls out that they must be responsible. That we would like for them to be responsible to apply for all rebates on our behalf or any other types of funding. Um, so it's out there for any big systemic renovation project um and capital projects. As you well know that um, you know, the overarching theme of, of the climate change action plan is to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And so we had to start from somewhere of collecting the data so that we can easily track, manage, monitor. All of our building's performance. Um, and so in FY twenty-two, the pilot MEA school decarbonizing grant program. Opens up for LEAs to take advantage of and we applied and were awarded. And so that um, an update on that, it's been a. It's been a little bit of a long road, but it's been difficult for the size of this system. Um. But Ms. Alston's done a great job shepherding these contractors and getting that, getting this to finally come to the end. And so we see the light at the end of the tunnel. We hope to have baseline data hopefully very soon, which is just in time for the building energy performance standards that went into effect July, January one. Which puts us on the hook for reporting our benchmarking on our administration buildings over thirty-five thousand square feet. So perfect timing. We'll hopefully get that baseline data. But it doesn't stop there. Obviously, we need to collect data monthly from now on into perpetuity, right? So we applied for the FY twenty-five MEA. Decarbonizing school grant AOA, AOI one. Um, we are anxiously waiting, so fingers crossed that we get that funding. And that we can continue to pick up the baton from um the FY twenty-two data and then um start collecting that and have that. So that we can then benchmark our buildings. Um, so great news on that. Just but fingers crossed that we'll uh get the FY twenty-five to continue with that. Um, as for building staff capacity and maintenance, building maintenance and management, not, not much of an update right there. Just want to be honest and transparent that there is not much of an update in that. Area. However, we do build our capacity uh for staff in the DSR department. So we're super excited to have Christina. Uh, Garcia Starling on board to complete our group um and start help moving the, the, the needle here. And then um consolidating PG CPS administration and the central office staff, we're happy to report also of a great up um. Update that a location has been identified. Uh, there's a lot still that has to go in motion for us to get this implemented, but. The whole goal is to take central, central office staff that are scattered out throughout the county. Um, and consolidate into one building um primary for, for the bulk of the uh central office staff. So. Stay tuned for more on that. Um, so. In the mitigation recommendation section on the left uh for priority two. Uh, for energy audits at all of our existing buildings so that we can rely on the data for the educational facility master plan cycles. So that our capital uh programs department and um Sean Matlick's, Matlick's team has an idea of how to really. Like where to focus our efforts on new builds, but those, we have ongoing discussions. Ms. Alston has ongoing discussions with various vendors on energy audits. So. You know, at the end, if you have any questions, she's here. She can certainly answer more specifically on what the status is, but I do know that she's been busy having. Or engaging in discussions. Um, clearly, our goal is always to um. Uh, choose not to go the fossil fuel route when we're building new schools. And so we're focused on geothermal whenever and uh possible. Um, except for there's gonna be instances where it's just not feasible, but hopefully we'll choose the lesser of the two evils of the fossil fuels. So if it's going to be a fossil fuel school, hopefully it's natural gas. And then also something exciting to report on our strategic plan, our T twenty-six. We have a newly implemented strategy that was introduced. So this has, this gives um priority two a lot more teeth. Um, gets it out there to the whole system that this is um a very important strategy to PC, PG CPS. So we're excited that that was at it recently. Um, continuing research of uh potential implementing, potentially implementing wastewater. Thermal energy technology that's under evaluation, but again, this and the next two are one of those or some of those items. That are just gonna be ongoing and long-term implementation processes. And then finally, there's one resiliency adaptation action in priority two, and that's to design all new. PG CPS buildings to be a resiliency hubs. And so that is currently always under consideration when we're building the new schools and. Director Morrison did mention our collaboration with it very, in its infancy, but we did have a meeting with the. Um, uh, Prince George's County Department of uh, uh, Environment on collaborating. Um, and to conceptualize resiliency hubs that, that we can partner together with. So again, that's in its infancy stage and. We'll hope to have something to report out to you soon. Moving on to priority three, um, not really in much updates and please, Jamie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but um currently. There's not really an update that we can provide on purchasing on the wholesale market at this point, um, until I guess uh contracts are up with Brickback and other sources, but. And then we've already discussed the, the availability of dashboards. Of course, that all depends on subscription renewals, but we are as a department are prioritizing this. Um, for the schools. Um, we put it into our FY twenty-six uh budget. To take the existing schools that have dashboards that were one up, once operational, but since have maybe like the subscriptions. Have expired, um, we'll try to get those renewed. Uh, moving on to the mitigation recommendations, so installing solar panels on PG CPS properties, we have a lot of traction on that right now. We're happy to say that. The six phase one P three schools will have all of their rooftop solars installed this summer, so we can add that to our portfolio. Um, and that we are um currently, uh, we, for, for over a year now, we've been discussing this community solar partnership. Where we can do um aggregate net metering at a, a number of our schools. That has been ongoing for a year and we are pleased to say that the PPA is finally under legal review. So that bowl and that, that's, that's moving. So we hope to have more to report on to that, but that's exciting that that's something that's like, you know, short term in the, in the near future. And another thing that is exciting to report is that also in its infancy, but we just had a kickoff meeting. That there will be, there is a ongoing feasibility study um that will assess all of our existing um. PG CPS portfolio of sites for that, that would be conducive to onsite solar development. And um not much to report on battery backup power. Uh, we were originally um hoping that it would be um. We would have that offered at the Mulliken Buslet, that microgrid project that's in Bowie. However, that's been kind of removed from the scope of work for, for a number of reasons. Um, but stay tuned and hopefully we'll have some other opportunities to report on that. Brief overview of what's our uh current rooftop portfolio. We do have rooftop solar. Um, on five existing schools and then we'll have six to come online hopefully this summer. Um, and then I've kind of mentioned everything else about the community solar, but that'll be equivalent to about two and a half megawatts of. Um, solar power for that community project. Um, that's a, a direct result, um, a, a directive. Or a merger commitment from the Public Service Commission from the Alta Gas and Washington Gas merger. And then currently we have eleven geothermal schools, but keep in mind that our phase two P three schools are in design or under construction. And seven of those eight schools, which hopefully will take occupancy in the next two to three years. Um, seven of those eight will be geothermal, so we can add to that eleven schools and, and increase that number as well. Um, I'm gonna kind of briefly go over the funding because I think we really touched this earlier, but one of the things that I will add, obviously with this new administration. Administration and this, you know, change of landscape of funding opportunities. and this, you know, change of landscape of funding opportunities for um, LEAs. Uh, one thing that we are still pursuing, because it is statutory in nature, is the IRA tax credits. You know, we're hoping that because it'll take an act of Congress, that we may be able to slip in Ellen Ochoa as a potential project. So we're in the, we're working on that currently. We're gonna keep moving forward as if it's gonna be there for us and, and uh, you know, cross our fingers and hope for the best. And then we've already kind of gone over uh, state funding, which is still very available and that we are pursuing actively um, diligently. And then one thing I wanted to put into perspective, because you know, it's always good to see data, right? Um, the stressing the importance of the rebates through the utility providers is important. And um, Ms. Austin's done a fabulous job of trying to capture all of that and we're still trying to work and make sure that we capture all of the smaller projects that may kind of fall out like under our radar. So we're working with the departments, trying to make sure it's in the language, like I said, for those capital projects and those systemic renovations. But just to put into perspective how important and impactful they are to us. I put a slide together to show you, oh, I apologize, that's a little blurry. Um, to show you the last eight schools that we've had come online. And the green line is the KWH savings that's calculated from the workbook that you do during that custom application on all of the energy efficient equipment that that building has. And then the purple bar is a, a calculation I just did basing, you know, just rudimentary. You take the KWH savings, multiply by in our average electric rate. And that could yield basically shows you what a cost avoidance is, that what, if we had not installed that energy efficient equipment that would then cost us that much theoretically, right? And then the blue bor- blue bar is the actual amount of the rebate for each of those. Um, and this slide is just uh, an aggregate of all of those together that kind of really puts it into perspective of how meaningful these utility rebates are. Um, on the left, you have the annual KWH savings. The middle is the total in power Maryland rebates for those eight schools. And then the cost avoidance, so to speak, is that nearly nine hundred thousand dollars annually that we were avoiding by having these energy efficient uh, uh, equipment that was installed in these new builds. Um, so with that being said, I'm kind of done with my portion. I'd like to hand it over to Ms. Austin, who can highlight all the wonderful projects that she's been um, spearheading and leading. So yeah, Jamie, you're up.
Thank you so much, Sheila. Great job. Um, really great job, given a comprehensive overview of where we are with priorities two and three with our climate change action plan. Truly, it is a team effort and um, everyone uh, has been contributing at such high levels from multiple departments. Um, when it comes down to, when you're looking at where you can really attack first, when you're trying to reduce greenhouse gas e- emissions in a facility, and you can do this at home as well. You know, oftentimes it's touted as the low hanging fruit. You know, what's the one I can really get to first? And it may not be the most costly, such as if you had to go and get a new HVAC system or a new light bulb. It's gonna be a little less cost of, less, less costly for you to attack the light bulbs first. Thank you so much for driving for me, Sheila. And so uh, we've been very fortunate, as Sheila said, um, the state of Maryland. We are, we should be very thankful that we have Empower Maryland. Now, right about now, because of this very uh, frigid winter that we've had, we're getting a lot of chatter about removing Empower Maryland. So I'll talk about that as a, as a, as a challenge, but hopefully we will continue to keep it. Empower Maryland uh, was established back in two thousand and eight. And it was actually established uh, with uh, a former uh, president who reached a hundred years, President Jimmy Carter. And it was designed to, he spearheaded it to help reduce energy. Very conscientious about being a good steward of everything he had, including energy. And so it's been around from two thousand and eight and unfortunately, a lot of people haven't, didn't really take advantage of it in its infancy. And when I assumed this role a little over ten years ago, I started getting information about these rebates. And so I had to go and, and try to figure out, okay, where, where do we go to, to start? And we had a person over in food and nutrition that had been working to get some of the food and nutrition rebates, but he retired. And so nonetheless, we started, you know, able to take advantage of these um, Empower Maryland rebates and not miss, not miss out on them. And one of the areas that we started attacking was the area in terms of lighting. So every student, um, Mikell and um, our other students that are here tonight, James and Olivia. Every still, Olivia, you're at a new school, new, new Kenmore. It's a great to be at a new school. Uh, but every student and, and educator didn't have the opportunity to, you know, go into a brand new school. And so it helps to enhance the, the learning environment. It helps to make our, uh, a learning environment safe and supportive. When we can, you know, put some paint in the building and brighten it up. I think Ms. Novak was talking about, you know, she was talking about students being depressed and, and, and mental health is so important. And so while we are looking at this LED lighting from a standpoint of low hanging fruit, but important to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, it also assists on the side of mental health, brightening up the building. And so we've been fortunate to be able to retrofit now about thirty percent of our portfolio. That's a combination of, of, of elementary, middle, high schools, bus lots and administrative uh, buildings. And we received requests uh, often and we ha- we have a running list that's been established, my goodness, since about twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And, and we've been working very diligently to, to get those schools uh, retrofitted. Lighting also is important uh, for safety. I mentioned safe and supportive, but when you think about our bus lots and many of our bus drivers arrive very early in the morning when it's still dark. Of course, daylight savings time is gonna come in this weekend, but when they arrive, it's very dark. And we, we got calls and about, oh, when I go get to the bus lot, there may be snakes out there. There may be other rodents out there and it makes it unsafe for them. So we were able to illuminate our bus lots to allow our drivers to have a safe and supportive environment, as well as the other staff out there from our garage that work on our buses. And so getting back to our schools, we received requests. And one of the requests that we received not too long ago was from Andrew Jackson Academy. Uh, we got reports where the, the, the halls were just in the, in the, in the classrooms were just very dim and it was not affording a good learning environment for the students. So we were fortunate to be able to upgrade the lighting there to LED lighting. Uh, and as such, uh, we've been able to enhance the learning environment and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you, Sheila, if you can uh, advance to the next slide. And these are, this is how the savings are reported back to us from Empower, Empower Maryland. And you may not be able to see some of the numbers are reflected here. However, um, it's there and we can make it available to you if you like, but it shows the, the savings achieved as Sheila alluded to. Um, it doesn't report out in the uh, the KWH savings, yes it does. It's gonna eventually start uh, this year, reporting out in greenhouse gas emissions. ICF, which is the administrative branch that governs and um, governs the Empower Maryland program, they will be reporting out in greenhouse gas emissions. So when you look at Andrew Jackson Academy, if you had to retrofit this using our own funds, this was done totally through the Empower Maryland rebates. And if you look at the, the, the side, the left-hand side of each of the three images, if you see number one, it's a little over fourteen thousand dollars. That was for outside exterior lighting. And then um, the first floor was a little over almost ninety-four thousand dollars. And then the second floor was sixty-one thousand. So if you do the math, you can see how valuable that project is. About over a hundred eighty-seven, eighty-six thousand dollars. That's how much it would have cost to retrofit this school. But by us utilizing the Empower Maryland rebates, again, if you look at your, if you live in the state of Maryland and you receive uh, a Pepco bill or BGE bill or Washington Gas bill, just look down on the line item and you'll see the line for Empower Maryland. This is what funds these projects. This is where we need advocacy for continuance, at least for our schools, to continue to allow us to be able to retrofit the lighting in these schools. We also receive the rebate incentives, as Sheila alluded to, in the area of HVAC. If we install a, a qualifying HVAC heating ventilation air conditioning system that's qualified, we get rebate incentives for that as well. A chiller, um, steam traps, uh, uh, gas powered water heaters, and it's a lot more that we get incentivized on outside of lighting. But again, this is what we can attack most uh, easily for schools that are not new. Next slide, please, Sheila. Uh, another school that we received the request from back in the Fall twenty twenty-four board meeting. Do you remember this board member, Boozer Struther? And so thankfully, we've had the school audit it and we will be able to retrofit this school before the next school year begins. And so uh, the principal is very excited and uh, we took time to walk the building. If you look at some of the existing lighter, you see those, those are T eights. You see that pink uh, tube light? That's a T eight. And it's pink and this is, these are actual, I didn't take a cover off, but this is actually how it looks. And there are dim areas in the school. So that's another uh, school that came up and we've been very proactive to satisfy and meet the needs of the school. Next slide, please. This is a project for James, James Robison. And uh, he has uh, if he hadn't told you, um, of course, we have green schools, quite a few green schools here at PG CPS. And James Robison applied for our first green ribbon school. And things are looking good, so keep your fingers crossed. But what we were able to do to assist James with a lot of the data, when we apply for these schools, they ask for a lot of data. Water data, ga- natural gas data, electric data. And so James is, is, and his team have been, worked very hard to submit the application. And what we were able to do to help trim down and to show our efforts for his application, we were able to retrofit the school fully, interior and exterior. That's for all of our projects. And uh, we are very hopeful that we will, uh, that Berwyn Heights Elementary School will become Prince Rogers County Public Schools' first green ribbon school. So thank you, James, to you and your team for all of your hard work. And we're pulling for you. And James got another, he has another one in the fire now. That's gonna be Matapanai. And we retrofitted Matapanai a couple of years ago, Matapanai Elementary School. But that's gonna be his next school that we're working with him, supporting him for the next green ribbon uh, school submission. Thank you, Sheila. Next slide. And this is some of the data uh, in, uh, that supports what I meant about what has to be submitted for these uh, green school applications and green ribbon school applications. And James uh, worked very hard to help us uh, with a, a spreadsheet to actually upload the data into that um, that really assists with the monthly information. So thank you again, James. And these are some of the savings for Berwyn Heights. So if you add the left-hand columns uh, to retrofit the inside, it was uh, seventy-two thousand dollars, little over seventy-two thousand dollars for the outside, the exterior lighting. Uh, that was a little over eighteen thousand dollars. So you get to, begin to see the value of this program. And it's not just installing the lights, but we work with the approved service providers uh, with warranties. You're gonna have an outage. Uh, one thing about LED lighting is, you know, it lasts longer than the traditional fluorescent or incandescent lighting. It's brighter, it, it uh, emits a less heat, which brings about the energy reduction. And so, but unfortunately, you're gonna have an outage at some point. And with some of the, the, the power, the currents that are going in and out of the buildings and when we have an outage, sometimes it trips the circuit. And then we have an outage and so, or we may have a flickering light. So it's very important that our approved service providers understand what we do, understand the mission for our students and our educators and a safe and supportive environment. So we have a warranty and those approved service providers uh, come out and replace the lighting under that uh, extended warranty period. Next slide, please, Sheila. All right. Wonderful. Thank you so much. And I have one little extra that I, I thought about. So when I talked about safe and supportive environments, I talked about those parking lots. Well, there was Bladenburg High School that was in high demand for um, just a greater illumination in the parking lot because it just became unsafe. There was a lot of activity that was happening in that area. So Principal Faulkner Jones kept, oh, well, when are we gonna get the lighting? When are we gonna get the lighting? And so we were able to come forth through her. I'm gonna, um, Sheila, if I can share now, hopefully I can share this. Thank you so much. Uh, share this, uh, hopefully it'll share. Uh, share this little video. If I can find it, let me see here. Where did it go? Let me see, just one second for me. And if we have any questions, we can uh, get the questions. Waiting for it to upload. It was there. I had to try it again. It's spinning. Hopefully it'll come soon. Maybe what I can do, okay, there we go. Let me see if I can share the screen now. Okay, let's see. Okay. Screen share. It may not share this time, maybe I can share it on another occasion. I'm trying, but uh, doesn't seem to want to allow me to share it, but not sure if there are any questions. Maybe I can get it before we end. But I was basically just gonna show you the, the parking lot and how that uh, parking lot metamorphosis from a dark parking lot to a well-lit and safe parking lot at Bladensburg High School. And that was back in December twenty twenty-one. Thank you so much.
All right. Does that conclude the presentation, Director Morrison?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Sheila.
Yeah, thank you both so much. Incredible work and detail and such a great update. Um, so I'm gonna ask that everyone go ahead and raise your hands if you have questions. We do usually try to end the meeting by two hour, you know, no later than two hour mark, which is coming up around six thirty. We did get a little bit of a late start. This Zoom platform will be used by another committee at seven. So we are, we are uh, definitely watching the time. Um, but I, you know, incredible detail. So, but please, uh, Mr. Roberson and uh, Miss uh, Mi- uh, Michael um, to follow.
Uh, one question and just a couple of points of clarification. So Jamie and Sheila, thank you very much for your presentation. I learned quite a bit. I appreciate it. Job well done. Uh, going to the US Green Ribbon School at Berwyn Heights. Um, I certainly uh, cannot take full credit for that. That was a group effort and the school is who applied. So the principal and the lead teachers there deserve the most credit. So just wanna put that out there, uh, a little asterisk next to that. Uh, due to the um, uncertainty at the US Department of Education, uh, it is very unclear if Berwyn Heights will actually be awarded the US Green Ribbon Award. It, the school was nominated by MSDE, uh, but because of that uncertainty, we're not sure. And we are also putting, Jamie, I owe you an email. Matapanai is probably gonna go on hold. Not probably, they are gonna go on hold because of that uncertainty. Uh, and then just a question, uh, kind of going back to Sheila's presentation. Do uh, when you all um, start working on the dashboard, maybe this is more of a comment. Just remember the teachers are gonna need professional development uh, for those new subscriptions.
Understood, yes. Well, hopefully we have an opportunity to provide the professional development. That means we have a dashboard. So thank you.
Okay, go ahead, um, Michael and then followed uh, uh, Joseph.
Hello, um, I thought both presentations were really cool and I think it's really cool to see infrastructure changes happening in the county. Um, I was wondering if there was like a list of schools that changes or like where, where people can find the list of schools, if the list is public, of schools and um, locations and buildings that the changes are coming to next.
Yeah. So do you mean the phase two P three schools that are currently either in design or under construction? Cause I certain, but like, we can certainly get that list to you. That's easy. But if it's, and then also the capital um, improvement plan or program through the state, the CIP it's, it's known for. That is how we get all of these uh, big capital projects and systemic renovations funded. Primary, it, it has to go through an approval profit process through the IAC. So our capital, our CIP manual that our um, Department of Capital Programs puts out is very valuable resource. And it will, it will put everything that they have in the queue, in line, um, that they have uh, work that they wanna get done. So if you um, can't find that, I certainly Um, that they have a work that they wanna get done. So if you um can't find that, I certainly could email you the link, but it's on their website.
Alrighty, thank you.
You're welcome.
There, Joseph, and then Christine.
Um, I I first, I wanna say that's excellent work. And that you all are doing when implementing uh recommendations two and three. Um, I I don't know, I, it's just, it's it's hard to hmm, har- hard to say just how great it is. Um, I I had uh two comments. One was just that I um Generation One Eighty came. Out with a recent report looking at solar installations throughout the country. And when I zoomed in, I could see Anna Rundle had so many of them, and the district had of Columbia had so many, and then we were kind of. Um, missing, uh, but seeing that Anna Rundle and I think DC as well. Has really pursued the PPA option and that you guys are looking into it, really gives me hope that in a year, a year, a couple of years. That that map's gonna be filled in for us. Um, and then, yeah, I think, and I I wanted to note, um, I I mean, I've been familiar with. Uh, you know, residents uh being able to take advantage of the empower program. I did not realize that that was something that the school system could take a, take advantage of. So I'm glad you brought that to our attention. Um, to so we can continue to advocate for its uh funding because. I know in the residential space is such an important program and more people need to take advantage of it. So thank you again for all you all done on on this. Um, and please keep me, keep it going, because it's really important for the students.
Thank you. We appreciate those kind words.
Right, thank you. Christina?
Yeah, uh, thanks again. Uh, also just super impressed. Um, I, every committee meeting we have, I'm just impressed by how. Uh, PG CPS is advancing on the different priority areas. So just uh congrats on that. Um, I was curious, um, if any of these new bills, I can't remember if Joseph, during your presentation earlier today, you mentioned these. Um, but bills like, I recently heard about the Next Generation Energy Act. Um, and then also heard about a Renewable Energy Certainty Act, and I was curious how these could potentially play out for PG CPS. Um, I think the Renewable Energy Certain- Certainty Act um raises some potential. For um deploying solar, with smaller small solar, smaller scale solar projects. Um, on school properties. I feel like that could be a really great way to do. Um, to have more than, I think I saw it was five schools right now that have rooftop so rooftop solar. But I'm curious if you all are tracking some of those uh bills and um kind of, yeah, kind of what. The implications could be for advancing some of these um priority areas for us. Thanks.
Um, to answer your question, I'm not certain that I've heard about the uh bill that you've shared. We've had a lot coming our way. Uh, one thing to note is that with the six P three schools that Sheila mentioned. We'll multiply those out times two. Because there will be aggregate net metering, meaning, meaning. With these and also with the ground solar opportunity, we'll do the same thing. So with aggregate net metering, you have the opportunity to go and select a school. It may be in a in a posi- a position where it's utilizing tremendous amount of energy and energy hog. And what you can do is you can assign that school. To that particular school that's gonna be getting the solar and aggregate net meter in, and you can offset the energy at that other school. So at or other facility. So at the six P three schools. Two schools have been aggregating, aggregately net metered to those sites. So you're gonna get twelve. So it's, you know, like math and you look at. Factoring out, it's becoming factorial. And we'll do the same thing also for the ground solar. Now, when we get to the next slate of uh, I'm getting here close to time, next slate of uh blueprint phase two schools. Um, I must, I'm believing that it's gonna be aggregate net metering also, but that hasn't been confirmed yet. So we're multiplying out. Um, you may not see it because you may just see the the solar on top of a school. However, when you think about aggregate net metering, you're factoring out more schools, and we are equitably representing all districts, all nine districts. Thank you for your question.
Sorry, uh, really quickly, in the last twenty seconds we have, um, Christine, I also wanted to um mention, I might have, I again, I went through things very quickly. But we are in that feasibility study, early stages of identifying existing sites, land, not just uh looking for rooftop. But actual uh land for ground mounted solar as well. So our hopes is to just continue to add to the portfolio. Um, of our of our solar production that we have. So stay tuned for more to come.
Last, I'll also add replacing roofs. When we replace roofs, we're trying to add solar at the same time if it's rooftop solar.
Well, great. Well, thank you all so much. I don't see any more hands, and I know we do have to adjourn the meeting because of the time, but this, you know, I again, wanna. Echo what everyone said. I think that I, this is a fantastic meeting tonight, and I appreciate we, all the presenters this evening. And we just learned so much, and I feel very caught up as well. There's a lot that I, that that's what I love, is the plan is so big. And it's in every aspect of the school system that that it's it's working. And the fact that no individual can really keep up anymore is just a testament to the deep work in the system, so I appreciate it. And we will uh get moving on some of the project ideas that um students that you brought forward. So thank you so much. So I will now move to adjournment. Um, the next Virtual Climate Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee Meeting. Will be held on April twenty third at four thirty PM. Um, please continue to check the PG CPS Board webpage for more information and updates. And I would thank you, everyone, for the meaningful discussions. There will be no further business. The time is now six thirty four PM. And the March fifth, twenty twenty five Climate Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee Meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Take care.
Good evening, everyone.